Good afternoon. I'm Larry Jamison, the dean of the medical school. I want to welcome all of you to this town hall meeting. It should be an exciting presentation and discussion. I think all of us are here for slightly different reasons, either to learn some definitions, to hear about some of the exciting advances in nanotechnology, to brainstorm about where the field may go in the future, to learn about some of the applications that have emerged, to have a chance to ask questions of experts, or just participate in a dialogue about one of the more exciting things at the interface of basic and translational science. So I'm delighted to see such a good turnout, and I'll turn the podium over now to Laurie Zola, who's helped to coordinate this event.
Not so much yet. Okay. I need some help to get from AV to get this started correctly so they can see our graphics. Well, while this is happening, let me welcome you very warmly to Northwestern University, the medical school campus. This is a town hall meeting, and it has several purposes. We have two campuses, of course, as most of you know, a north campus, Evanston, and a south campus here in Chicago. We take seriously that our work is interdisciplinary and inter-campus. One of the most exciting things that's located mostly at the north campus is the International Institute for Nanotechnology, and one project of that institute is the Nanoscale Science and Engineering Center, or NSEC as we call it. And this is a project that's funded by the National Science Foundation to really hone in and coordinate cross-campus work on the medical school and on the Northwestern University north side, Evanston as well, involving undergraduates, involving graduate students, and even involving me, a bioethicist. And one of the premises of bioethics and science and society, and the center that Northwestern has, is that every single part of the work that we're so proud of at Northwestern University is also open to the public for comment and observation and a community discourse. And we've actually pledged to make the town hall meetings a feature of an ongoing relationship between the neighborhoods and the cities in which we live and serve and all of us work, and the science that we're so excited about, so the present and the future. That's why we've invited you all here, not just to learn scientist to scientist, but also to learn scientist to community. So I want to start with saying thank you, because I believe that thank you should always begin in presentations. It is not just Northwestern University that made this event possible. It's also the Illinois Science Council and the Center for Nanotechnology and Society. They did a great job, and we want to thank them for helping to sponsor this as well. I'm going to also introduce Chad Merkin before my remarks. So Dr. Chad Merkin is a remarkable individual, and too many prizes and awards to, in fact, seriously go into. I want to give him credit for doing both his undergraduate training at Dickinson College and his graduate training at Penn State University, where he completed his PhD in chemistry in 1989. In that year, he moved to MIT as a National Science Foundation postdoc fellow. He came here to Northwestern University in 1999 as an assistant professor in chemistry, and in 1997, he was named Charles E. and Emma H. Morrison Professor of Chemistry. He now is also the George B. Rathbun Professor of Chemistry, Professor of Material Science and Engineering, Professor of Medicine, and Director of the Northwestern University International Institute for Nanotechnology. He's won many, many, many awards in all of these areas, but probably the most important one was the NIH Director's Young Pioneer Award. This is an extremely important award, given to very few people around the country every year, and it comes with the honor that -- which he deserves. He holds many patents and has written many articles, 312 publications, 325 patents, 67 issued. He also serves on the editorial board of 22 scholarly journals, is an active consultant with major companies, and in addition, has founded two of his own, Nanosphere and Nano Inc., and also has co-founded the academic journal Small, which is the preeminent journal in the field of nanotechnology. So nanotechnology is the topic of today's conversation, but the topic of today's conversation is the impact of new technology on human societies. And this is not a new problem. This is a problem that's, in fact, engaged human societies and moral philosophers since the Industrial Revolution began to raise these sorts of questions about technology and its relationship to societies. When people left farms and congregated in cities and did so because they changed the energy of tilling the soil, the human energy, into the mechanical energy that marked the Industrial Revolution, philosophers like me were fascinated with that switch. And these are some of the changes that occurred, besides in urbanization, was the changing of the human body into a part of the process of mechanization itself. So philosophers, Adam Smith and others, asked these sorts of questions. How will this change in industry create a more humane society? What's going to be the relationship between a new free market and bourgeois interests that dominate in that new free market, and in global society, which for them was the first British imperialism, and the new democratic state that gave people voice in a new and different sort of way? Should the market be regulating the state, or should the state be regulating the market? It was at that point an open question. How do workers participate in controlling the conditions of their daily lives for the first time as free agents and not as peasantry? Those issues were the ones that dominated that discourse. Now, we have some of the same questions, as you'll see. Nanotechnology is a kind of industrial revolution, perhaps more than any other metaphor. That's the one that we think fits. And here, we ask the same questions. How does the change in industry create a more humane, more just society? What's the relationship between a free market, a flat world, and the democratic state? What sort of controls? What sorts of oversight? What sorts of regulations? National, state, or international? And finally, not just all the workers, but how do all citizens now participate in controlling the conditions of our daily lives? Because we know that industry creates social situations, not just in the workplace, but also, and profoundly so, in our global environment. Now, this is today's meetings. I've given a couple of questions, actually, several questions, that might get you started thinking about what you want to query in the presentation you're going to hear. What sort of ethical questions are created by Dr. Merkin's research? What does he think they are? What do you think they are? How do you think this work benefits our town, so to speak, both our university and our town of Chicago? How does it challenge it? What are the risks? Not only the benefits, but the risks intended to this technology. How much should a citizen need to know about the technology to be able to participate in these choices? What role should bioethicists, or clergy, or random people, just interested folk, have in determining what sort of scientists done and why? What policies should be formed? What should we recommend as citizens in the coming elections about science and science policy? And finally, should scientists be self-governing, or should the public, or the government, or the market have a role in oversight? Open questions? And now I want to say, Dr. Merkin, I hope you enjoy answering them.
Okay, let me begin by thanking Laurie for setting this all up. She's taken a real leadership position in trying to get people talking about issues involving nanotechnology and societal impact for the past few years. And this is, you know, a tough thing to really get rolling, because you've got scientists who are really focused on what they're doing and thinking about all the problems they face in the lab, and you've got ethicists thinking down the line, what's going to happen as these technologies and sciences develop. And of course, you have to get the two together to begin to really seriously think about these issues and come up with hopefully answers to some of the important questions that she's brought up. Now, I want to say from the start, I don't plan on answering any of the tough ones. I've got a partner in all this. Where's Mark Rattner? He's hiding back there. Mark Rattner will be speaking, I think, in January sometime. January 8th, another town hall meeting, cover a different aspect of nanoscience and nanotechnology at Northwestern and around the world. And any tough questions, I will immediately defer to him. How do I get my presentation up here? Okay, so today, I want to, I guess, briefly cover these issues here and then get to the question and answer period. First of all, talk about what nanotechnology is. If you talk to different people, different scientists, different engineers, different medical types now, you might get very different answers to that question, because it does mean different things to different people. I'm going to tell you what it means to us here at Northwestern, how we approach the development of the field through what we call the International Institute for Nanotechnology. Talk a little bit about where we can find applications of it today, where we might find it tomorrow. Talk about some of the tools that are driving the development of the field. It turns out, that's really important, because a few decades ago, this would really just be the topic of science fiction, through the advent and development of a series of really powerful tools that allow us to manipulate matter on this really fine length scale, see what we've made, and make all sorts of unique structures. We can really explore it in great detail, and it's really revolutionized many fields of science and engineering. Talk a little bit about economic impact, and there already has been some substantial impact, not just around the world, but even in the Chicago area. Talk about how we're trying to facilitate that at Northwestern, and then we'll hit on the societal impact issues. Okay, one of the things that we did a few years ago was we established what we call this International Institute for Nanotechnology. One of the ideas was that this is a rapidly growing field. It's a field that is going to involve lots of different contributions from many different types of disciplines, and it's better if we get organized and include lots of people, all the people that have something to contribute to the area under one umbrella organization, and that's what we call the IIN. This is a consortium between Northwestern and Argonne primarily. It involves contributions from the Evanston campus in what we call the Center for Nanofabrication and Molecular Self-Assembly, a four-year-old building that really is the headquarters for the IIN. Our IBNAM Institute, which is down here at the medical school. This focuses on a lot of the science and engineering aspects. This focuses on more of the medical aspects of nanotechnology. And then the Center for Nanoscale Materials, which is a state-of-the-art facility that's come online at Argonne, that houses and acquires a lot of the key instrumentation that allows us to do some of the state-of-the-art experiments that I'll be talking about. So by putting all these groups together, we have the infrastructure, intellectual infrastructure, and physical infrastructure to do almost any sort of experiment in the field. And that's really exciting, because that allows us to move problems forward, get to answers to problems or questions rapidly in this area, and it allows us to pick the right people and form the right teams to do that in a very efficient manner and to do it in a proper way. As a result, we've been able to raise substantial resources. This now commands over $350 million worth of infrastructure and support for doing this type of research. So it makes it one of the largest institutes for nanotechnology in the world. It also draws people from many different disciplines outside of Northwestern. We have now very strong collaborations and interact with lots of different universities. I think it's over 40 different universities now, over 50 different companies, and many government labs throughout the world. We have exchange programs with Korea, with Singapore, with Germany. And so it's really kind of created a focal point for bringing some of the world's best in this particular area to Northwestern. What is the nanometer length scale? I know this is a broad audience. For some, this might be repetitious. For others, this may be new. So I thought I'd spend a little bit of time talking about it, because I think it's important to get perspective. When we talk about small, how small it's small, well, I think most of us think that a flea is a small structure. Well, that's pretty large from a nanotechnologist's perspective. If you march down the length scale, we go from something that's roughly a millimeter in length to a human hair, which a fine one would be about 20 microns in diameter. These are things you can see if you've got good eyes. You get to a red blood cell, that's about five micrometers in diameter. You need an optical microscope to see that. That's about 5,000 nanometers in diameter. It's still huge compared to the scale that we're talking about. Keep marching down, we get to bacteria. We can still see these with optical microscopes, but now, if we move to viruses, we need to use electron microscopes. The flu virus is about 100 nanometers in diameter. Now, we're getting to what most people refer to as the interesting length scale, from, again, a nanotechnologist's perspective. And the reason is, we'll talk about why that is, but this is the length scale of biology. It begins to approach the length scale of chemistry. If you think about it in terms of, again, benchmarks, DNA, the double helix is about two nanometers in diameter. That's a pretty small structure. And then this is an interesting man-made structure. It's a nano-abacus made of C60, a Buckminster fullering, a soccer ball-shaped molecule, made of nothing but carbon atoms. Here you can see, each molecule makes up a bead on the abacus, and they're moved around with a tool called the scanning tunneling microscope. Again, something that, you know, just a clever, cutesy type of demonstration, but something that wouldn't be possible just a decade ago, or about 15 years ago or so. And then if you move down to the ultimate length scale, these are atoms. In fact, the Kanji characters for iron, F.B., written with iron atoms, again, the same type of instrument moving them one atom at a time on a surface. And that's really quite powerful. Changes the way you think about matter and what you can do with it. You begin to think about the building of structures, not from top down, but from bottom up. Instead of taking what nature gives you, you can think about building structures, one atom at a time, one molecule at a time, and building them up into a particular structure that has the properties you want for a given application. That's really one of the powerful things in nanoscience and nanotechnology, is changing the way people approach materials, design, chemical design, building structures that can interface, as you'll see, with biological systems. So how do we define it, or how do we think about it? I have a three-part definition or description of it. From my perspective, nanotechnology is a field that first focuses on developing tools for making, characterizing, and manipulating materials on this sub-100-nanometer length scale. Because without that tool, without those tools, we don't have a field. So you first have to be able to make these structures, see what you've made, characterize them, and you need to be able to do that relatively rapidly. And through, again, the advent of a lot of tools, some of them were invented here at Northwestern, as a matter of fact. We can now do this and do it fairly routinely, and I'll show you a couple that are really quite powerful, and allow us to make some structures that have really fascinating properties. Second part, and this is really where a lot of the science is in nanoscience and technology, determining the chemical and physical consequences of miniaturization. Here's a fundamental rule about nanoscience. Everything, regardless of what it is, when miniaturized to this length scale, has new properties. As I'll show you a little bit later on, you take gold, you miniaturize it to 10-nanometer particles, it's no longer gold. It's red in color. Same thing is true of silver. Changing the shape on that length scale, you can change all the optical properties, you can change many electrical properties, most of the physical properties, most of the chemical properties of the material, simply by manipulating the size, shape, and composition of materials on this length scale. And so that means everything old becomes new to a scientist, right? Nothing's really known. You have to figure out what the properties are. And one of the reasons for that is when you make structures so small, now their surface atoms become major contributors to the overall properties of the structure. When you have a large structure, the number of atoms on the surface are relatively small compared to the number of atoms that make up the bulk. When you make a really small structure, that ratio changes, and those surface atoms begin to contribute significantly to the overall properties of the material. And then the third part, and this is where the technology is, you know, once I recognize that a material has different properties, I say, how can I use it? How can I take advantage of those properties which aren't associated with the bulk material and create something useful, something that allows me to do something I can't do with conventional technology? And so that's really how it all fits together from my perspective. And so the name of the game is figuring out how to get your hands on these tools, or invent these tools, make these materials, figure out what their properties are, and then ask how you can take those properties and develop technology based upon them. Okay, so here's an example right here. As I said, everything is different on this scale. Here are examples of gold and silver. I think we all know what gold and silver looks like. Well, this is what it looks like on the nanoscale. So these are particles. You can see their sizes and shapes here. These are all spherical particles. The diameter ranges from 40 to 100 nanometers. These are actually triangular particles, made of gold over here. And these are the wavelength, or the colors of white that we see from the particle scattering light. If we bring a white light coming off the edge of this microscope slide, we can look at the scattered light coming off at the naked eye. What you can see is that size, shape, and composition matter. This is actually what I said before. If you look at this, these are silver particles. The only difference is 40, 80, and 100-nanometer particles. Look at the colors. Completely different. You want green, you go to 50-nanometer gold particles. Not the gold color that we associate with, you know, our wedding band. You want orange, you go to 100-nanometer particles. Can't get the reds from the spherical particles, but if we go to these triangular structures, we can get the red color. And what we're effectively doing is changing the way light interacts with these types of particles by controlling the size, shape, and composition of the particles. There's a much more sophisticated explanation for the aficionados that we can talk about later. But for right now, I think the important thing is that properties are different on this scale. Properties of the material are different on this scale. Okay, so how do we think about the field then? Okay, so to start, our Department of Nanotechnology, I would say that that's a silly thing to do, because nanotechnology really is everything. It's really kind of a renaissance in all of the fields of science and engineering, taking advantage of these new tools and thinking about the building of materials, the construction of molecules, the use of those types of structures in medicine and biology, in a very different way. As I said, instead of taking what nature gives us, learning how to build those types of structures from the bottom up, building the perfect material for a given application. So I don't think of it as another circle in the Venn diagram. I think of it as a set of concepts, a set of capabilities, that impact all of the old disciplines, and that could change the way scientists think about their disciplines, and how they can use these types of tools. And as those tools grow and as those concepts grow, you'll see nanotechnology effectively just be intertwined with all of these. Not that it's overcoming all of these. Everybody says this is Chad's slide of taking over the world. Not meant to be that. It's that these concepts will just become part of all the disciplines and used as if they're standard tools in chemistry, in biology, in medicine, material science, engineering, and so on and so forth. Okay, where is nanotechnology now? Well, you'd think that we're at the very beginning stages of this. Well, not so true. I mean, nanotechnology's been around for a long time. I think Mark will give a lot of examples, maybe even going back to the Middle Ages. I cut out a lot of those, because I want to focus on some of the applications. We use nanoparticles all the time. They've been around for a long time. Zinc oxide is a good example. I think, at least when I was a kid, I remember people going to beaches and having the white pasty creams on them. Don't have those anymore. Why? You make the particles small enough, they don't scatter the visible light. We end up getting particles that can absorb you, the light, protect us from the sun, and they end up becoming much more attractive materials to wear. Things called nanogels or aerogels, these are structures that have networks of nanoporous materials that are great insulators, and so can protect you from the heat or from the cold. In this case, you can see a person with his finger on one side and a flame at a very high temperature on the other. Of course, the heat is not transferred there. Again, by controlling the nano-architecture of the material, you can control how good of an insulator it is. This is one of my son's favorite slides, carbon nanotubes. I think some of you have heard of those. These are cousins of what I talked about in the beginning, bucky balls, the Buckminster fullering. These are tubes of graphite effectively wrapped upon themselves so that you end up having freestanding nano-wire-type structures. They look like this. They come in all sorts of different configurations, and the subtleties of those configurations affect their overall properties. But they're already being used in a lot of sporting equipment. They're exceptionally strong materials. They're very flexible. And in fact, my son likes this because he can, he's an avid tennis player. Mark knows this. He's been able to convince me to buy him two new tennis rackets, because this is somehow going to give him an advantage on the tennis court. I can tell you that most of that, I think, is a marketing type of thing, because the amount of nanotube they put in here is very, very small. But people are beginning to use these in materials that are sold and that we buy as consumers. So again, it's something we should consider and then think about. Is there a real benefit? Is there some sort of negative consequence associated with this, and some of the issues that Laurie brought up at the beginning of the talk? Filters, fans, all sorts of materials. Filters, fans, all sorts of materials, paints, have particles in them, anywhere from titanium oxide to silver particles that are used to kill bacteria. These are bacteriocides. And again, if you go into any nursing home, most of the carpeting is covered with material that has very tiny particles made of silver in many cases, or TiO2, that are used to destroy, kill bacteria either through photochemical processing from the light in the room or simply because of the toxicity of the silver for bacteria, in the case of the silver particles. And so here are more examples. Here, even in your wash, they're using all sorts of coatings that are designed to take the bacteria taken from the clothing, taken from vacuum cleaners, taken in refrigerators, and effectively reduce the amount of bacteria present during use. This is very important. I think if you go out and buy, and you're doing your Christmas shopping, look carefully at the labels. You'll see a company called Nanotex. They use tiny particles to coat things like tackies, to coat carpeting, to make them stain-resistant. And they've designed particles that cause water, for example, to beat up and reduce the ability for the material to soak into the fabric and eliminate or reduce the possibility of staining. And this stuff works phenomenally. I learned this in my own house. We just bought a new house, and first thing, of course, that somebody does is they come over and I give them a glass of red wine. They trip and spill the red wine all over the white carpet. I'm ready to have a heart attack. Go down and clean it all up, and I look over there, it's coated with Nanotex. And it turns out that these types of tiny particles are very good at controlling the wetting properties of those types of solutions and controlling the ability of those solvents to soak into underlying carpet. Ceramic nanoparticles are being used in the dental industry now to improve adhesion. So these are even being put in your mouth in many cases. So in many examples of these types of particles, these types of structures, the material's already out there. So this idea that we have this great new field, and all of a sudden, over the next 15 years, we're going to see lots of new materials come out of exploration of this field and end up hitting the marketplace, is in part right, but also in part wrong. It doesn't, it certainly doesn't look at the whole story. You've already got those materials out there. So these materials are out there, they're being used, and of course, we need to think about what are the consequences of using them, both good and bad. What are the economic impact areas? Again, this is just opinion, but I said this from the beginning, and I still stick to it. I think there are really four main ones, with a fifth one coming down the line. I don't have that on this slide, but I'll mention it in a second. Diagnostics. Being in the medical school, of course, we know the importance of diagnostics. Medical diagnostics, being able to detect different types of disease markers, either based upon chemical markers or biological markers. Nanoparticles and nanostructures can be made so that they have major advantages in terms of diagnostics. We'll talk about a few of them and a couple of the examples that I have. They create very high sensitivity diagnostic tools, very high selectivity diagnostic tools that allow you to improve disease detection. Therapeutics. Creating materials that can go into the body, take a particular therapeutic payload to a particular area of the body, deliver it without a lot of the side effects of materials made by more conventional approaches. There's a very large center here funded by the National Cancer Institute to develop materials that allow us to do just that, to use nanomaterials to create more effective ways of treating cancer. Materials design, this is always going to be a big area. As I said, everything old becomes new when you miniaturize it. So being able to make all these types of materials, creating tools, creating synthetic methods for doing that, really critical part of the whole operation, allows us to discover all sorts of new properties that can be used for many applications. And then, of course, electronics and computers, and I think Mark will probably spend a little more time on this. I don't want to embarrass him, but he's considered the father of molecular electronics, which is a very important idea. If you think about where miniaturization has impacted everybody in this room, of course, in the electronics industry, the development of computational tools. We've gone from, you know, huge computers now to ones that are much more powerful and can run this particular presentation and that cost a relatively small amount. If you think about where we're going in terms of how small these types of structures can ultimately be made, we're going to hit the limit when we get to the atomic or molecular length scale. And one of the questions is, how do I replace the normal solid-state components in the electronic devices that I take for granted today with molecular-based ones? What are the properties of molecules, of electronic components and such devices and computational devices as well? There's a whole field that was really started at Northwestern by Mark that focuses on trying to answer those types of issues and ask, can we really change the way we build these types of structures? And what would we have to do to do that? And there are a lot, there's a lot of fundamental science in that, but there's also a big payout in terms of new technology that can come from those types of studies. And that's a field that will continue to thrive over the next few years. And then the one I didn't put on here, which is really important, is energy. It's really, really quite critical. You're going to see this being a very important theme in many areas, certainly in nanotechnology. If we're going to come up with solutions to the world's energy crisis, to our dependence on fuel and oil, we're going to have to come up with new approaches to generating power, to storing it, to transporting it. And that's going to require the development of new materials. And many of those new materials, and we've looked at a lot of the old materials, right? Many of the new materials are going to come from investigations of nanoscience, the ability to make things new by miniaturizing them and perhaps getting extra capabilities by discovering unusual properties associated with these nanostructure materials. Okay, I want to give you a couple of examples of technologies that have come out of Northwestern that I've been connected with and talk a little bit about, you know, how they're impacting us in terms of our research, but also the world in terms of diagnostics, or at least in terms of, the world in terms of applications. One deals with diagnostics. And I guess what I want you to think about is, you know, when you, when you go to the doctor and you give a, give them a blood sample, they send that off to an outside lab, and that lab then screens that sample for all sorts of different markers associated with disease or bodily malfunction. And those markers might be metal ions, they might be small molecules, they could be proteins, or they could be nucleic acids, DNA, signatures associated, genetic signatures associated with disease. Now, one of the questions we've always asked is, why do you have to do that? Why do you have to send a sample like that to an outside lab? Why can't these types of tests be done at the point of care? Well, one of the reasons is, no, not that simple. It's cumbersome, it requires a very complicated instrumentation, requires highly-trained personnel to run it, and as a result, the entire diagnostics industry is centralized. But if you could create new technology that would make it a lot simpler and allow you to move it closer to the point of care, I guess I would argue that you could potentially revolutionize the whole field of medical diagnostics and in the process, do a lot of good. This thing's not working very well. Okay, so let me, let me give you an example of one of the problems that we've been working on. So, as I said, there are all these different types of markers you can look at. One that's interesting is DNA. And one of the reasons that's interesting is that everything living has a unique genetic signature. So there's a unique code for every genetic, viral, or bacterial disease. That's a good thing. And we can determine what those codes are. We've been determining them over the years. And for those of you, if you think back to your sophomore biology, of course, hopefully you can remember back that far, DNA's made up of two strands, right? They come together to form a double helix. Well, if I know one strand, and I know that's a signature for a particular disease, I can create another strand that can latch onto it, form a complex, and carry with it some sort of signature, some sort of indicator that tells me that particular marker is present. So that's great. So I now have a way of creating a detection system for disease or DNA. That's the good news. The bad news is that the average human contains a very small amount of DNA, and the average sample contains really only relatively few molecules of DNA. And that means that I oftentimes need very sensitive probes to detect DNA. And so obviously, we think that one of the solutions to this may be nanotechnology. So how do we approach this? Well, think back to what I showed you in the beginning. And we talked about those particles, and we recognize they have these wonderful optical properties that depend upon size and shape. Well, the idea was that maybe I could learn how to attach DNA strands to these so that I could kind of create, think of a chemically-specific Velcro ball, a little nanoball in this case, that can latch onto these and then give me some sort of colorimetric indicator of the presence of a particular target. And it turns out, because these have so many atoms in them, they're very, very intensely colored compared to normal dyes, so I can see really, really low concentrations of them. So how does that work? Well, here's the idea. The idea is, let's say I have a target that I want to detect. Let's say anthrax DNA. I know the sequence associated with it, and I can design now two particles, and I just call this A and B, these are sequences on them, that recognize both portions of the target. And if the target's present, they latch on and bring these two particles together. On the cartoon, I show this going from red to blue because that's exactly what happens in solution. So one of the other neat nanopropries here is that these particles, when they get close together, begin to feel the presence of one another, and you get an optical shift. In this case, a colorimetric change from red to blue for the aficionados of the plasmons interacting, and the particles get within a critical distance of one another. Well, that's kind of neat because now what I have is a binary color scheme for detecting DNA. Because I can look at this and say, well, red is negative, right? And blue is positive. If I put this on a white background, I kind of have a litmus-like test for DNA. And that's about as simple as you get in terms of detecting different targets. And now I can design different particles that recognize different targets. And I can now create systems for just about any disease where I have the genetic information associated with that particular disease. And now I can create a very simple way of detecting all sorts of nucleic acid markers for disease. Well, we took that concept, a very, very simple concept, and we began to put it together and first of all, talk about it in the scientific world, and people liked it. And it turns out, there are all sorts of interesting properties associated with structures that make them really ideal for diagnostic purposes. The other thing we did was, we realized that we could really have big impact if we could develop commercially-developed technology. And so we started a company called Nanosphere that, over the last six years, has taken this type of system, actually uses variants of it, and reduced it to commercial practice. And they sell a system that now allows you to do rapid DNA detection in a device about the size of a toaster. And it turns out, you can simultaneously look at about 60 different nucleic acid markers in one shot of the system. Quickly sorted, it's the most selective DNA detection system out there right now. It's also one of the simplest, and it doesn't require something known as PCR for preamplification of the, of the sample. And so it gets around a lot of the problems of the cumbersome technology that I was talking about before. And so that system is an example, one that was just launched, and it's now being used in hospitals around the world. It's just being, being kind of strung out around the country in terms of the sales force, with the sales force getting traction in different hospitals around the country. This company was the first company started, and it just went public last year, I'm sorry, last month, two months ago, and raised $110 million in terms of capital to help develop the technology further. But the really interesting thing about this technology is you can begin to think about not just doing, looking at nucleic acid markers, you can look at lots of different markers. And you can create all sorts of fancy schemes for detecting these markers at really, really low levels. And one of the recent innovations is the development of something we call the bio-barcode assay. And one of the, the questions was, could we create a detection system that would allow us to detect protein, protein particles, really, really low concentrations that we typically associate with PCR detection and nucleic acids? Now, why would we want to do that? Well, protein markers are quite important. For any male that's over the age of 40, if they've gone to a doctor recently and gotten a physical, they've been tested for PSA, the marker for prostate cancer. The way this type of test works is you have two particles. One is actually a microparticle. It's got a magnetic core and an antibody that can bind, it's just a sticky group that can bind the target. And we've got one of those gold particles that I showed you. And it also has an antibody that can also recognize the target and sandwich it. And this carries with it lots of strands of DNA. Now, the beauty of this is, once these structures form, we can just add a little magnet and pull these out of solution and get rid of the rest of the muck in the solution. And then we can add a chemical reagent that releases these DNA strands. Now, if you think about it, the beauty of that is, for every one of these guys, I'm going to release a lot of these guys. And now I can use that commercial device I just showed you to sort those guys, measure the concentration, and I can back-calculate the concentration, instantly back-calculate the concentration with PSA. Now, why is that important? If you don't understand the technology, don't worry about that. Because what's important here is that this ends up being about a million times more sensitive than the best technology out there for detecting proteins. And that really is field-changing in terms of what you can do with it. Because that changes now the types of markers you can use for disease. You can begin to consider markers that you can't consider with the conventional technologies. And you can use old markers for new applications. And I know Tony Schaefer's in the room somewhere, Bill Catalone, Norm Smith, we're all involved in a project where we're trying to use this high sensitivity to prove that, first of all, people, patients that have, that have prostate cancer and have their prostates removed, when that happens and they get tested for PSA with all the commercial technologies that are out there, they register as a zero, as if they have no PSA in them. We've proven, at least in a small sample study that we've done recently, that everybody post-prostatectomy has PSA in them. Now, why is that important? Well, that's important because now if these people recur, guess what happens to PSA concentration? It begins to rise. Well, with the conventional technology, it sometimes can take years before you can detect the PSA. With this technology, you can track it from the beginning and hopefully establish recurrence if it happens years earlier than with the conventional technology. And that could be the difference between life and death. You can also take a person who stays flatlined at a very low level, and hopefully, we think, tell them that they are not going to recur from prostate cancer after a certain number of checks. And so that, that's also valuable, valuable information. And so what I think from a scientific standpoint is, is this allows us to think about disease management in a very different way. We have this extraordinary sensitivity, and now we can look at any of these areas where residual disease is really important, with current issues like the prostate cancer example. And as I'll show you, many examples. And if you think about this in terms of the analytical scale and what people can do with modern technology. This is for the aficionados. These are the fancy terms for concentration. These are for the non-afficion, the number of molecules per drop. If we look at detecting blood sugar for diabetes, that's not a very sensitive device. It don't happen. You have a lot of blood sugar in you. If we wanted to look at protein markers, typically we look in this regime right here. And the conventional technology is ELISA, and there are, as I said, lots of FDA-approved markers out there for detecting and monitoring different types of disease states. The bio-barcode assay allows you to detect in here, but it also allows you to get down here. Again, orders of magnitude below what you can get with the ELISA technology. And so, you know, where is that going to have an impact? Well, we're trying to now validate all sorts of new Alzheimer's markers that appear in cerebral spinal fluid and in blood that are not track, trackable with conventional ELISA technology. We've been able to show that these types of markers exist and correlate them to the state of the disease, hopefully leading to one of the first diagnostics for Alzheimer's disease. Mad cow disease, a little bit of mad cow disease is a big problem. Same thing with HIV. We have collaborations here with Steve Walensky and his group trying to develop it for HIV. Many types of cancers, pulmonary disease and cardiovascular disease. And so what we're trying to do now is just challenge the medical community to begin to think about using this type of tool and the ultra-high sensitivity of it to think about the markers they consider for old diagnostic tools, and what they can use them for in terms of creating new applications, that's the PSA example, for looking at new markers that can't be considered with the old technology because they fly under the radar screen of that conventional technology in terms of sensitivity. Okay, second example. A big driving force, as I said, for nanotechnology is computation. And so 4,000 years ago, this is how we did computation. Came a long way. Computers in the 40s are developed. Again, we have the problem where a big device doesn't do a whole lot compared to today's standards, but requires a lot of, lot of space and volume. Get better at it, build supercomputers, and then today we have these chips that just do amazing things, allow us to, each have a laptop that we carry with us. And in fact, some people have multiple computers that are just part of their everyday lives. And these things run everything. And the big reason for that has been miniaturization. And, you know, if you think about why we can do that, well, there's a technology called lithography that allows you to print these structures. And over time, we've gotten better and better at printing them, better meaning being able to print smaller structures. You can see there's almost a linear progression with time. And with that progression, we have the ability to pack in more and more memory. And that creates more power, more capabilities in terms of what we will ultimately do with these systems. Now, how do you keep going? How do you keep making smaller and smaller structures? Well, they have all sorts of tricks and variations they've been using in the normal fabrication process. And they've actually done a lot better than many people thought they were going to be able to do. But as they do that, two things happen. One is, these things get much more complicated, they get a lot more expensive, and the price goes up. And they become limited in terms of the types of materials they ultimately can work with. And so one of the things we thought about from a nanoscience standpoint is, how do we get around that? Well, they use light typically. Photolithography uses light to print structure. Light has an inherent limitation associated, that's the wavelength. It has a footprint, the size of the wavelength dictates often how low you can go in terms of feature size. Well, how do you avoid that? Our idea was, you can go to a probe, something called an atomic force microscope tip, which can be made very, very sharp, and we can use this like a pen to deliver molecules directly to a surface. And now we're just going to be limited by how sharp we can make that tip. And so the idea was, let's develop this tool we call dip-nanolithography. And the way dip-nanolithography works is, you can take a tip, bring it in contact with the surface, and when that happens, something interesting occurs, this is luck. Water actually doesn't work very well, at least it didn't in the old days, in the winter in Chicago because it was too dry. But if there's a reasonable humidity, water collects the point of contact. And now, like a normal pen, we can use that water as a carrier solvent. And as we move the tip across the surface, molecules are deposited, and if we design the molecules to react with the surface, we get a structure that's one molecule high and it follows the path of the pen and has the dimensions that we define based upon how long we keep the pen in contact with the surface. So this is an early example, but a very famous example. The first thing we want to do is demonstrate this was flexible. This is made out of molecules. Each structure here is one molecule. Color has no meaning to this, this is all false color because we're below the wavelength of light. We're looking actually at the frictional force between the tip and the surface to read this. So the molecules that we've patterned here have something called a carboxylic acid group that makes them water-loving and very sticky, so they're high friction. And the background area is low friction, blue. And we've set the instrument up to give us that type of contrast map. Well, this is Richard Feynman's speech. Plenty of room at the bottom where he predicted back in 1960, actually he gave it verbally in 1969, that people would be able to do this type of miniaturization, and actually predicted by the year 2000s if it was possible. He was really kind of pathetic. He published this two weeks before the turn of millennium in science, demonstrating the capabilities that came online because of this change in way of thinking about how you print these types of structures on the nano-scale. Now, you know, one of the similarities and differences, the similarities are that this has an external ink reservoir, and ink is transported from the tip to the surface. The difference is between a normal pen and dip-nanolithography is obviously the size of the pen, this water monistus, which is really quite special, and the fact that we use chemicals that react with the surface so that we get stable structures, so the molecules don't skate around all on the surface after they've been anchored there by some sort of chemical reaction. So, you know, you want to do more than just make cute logos and reproduce Richard Feynman's speech out of molecules. Turns out, this is really a powerful tool. You can build structures routinely on the nano-scale. You can build things out of silicon, you can build them out of magnetic materials, making free storage structures. You can study things like polymer crystallization, you can build the highest-density gene chips ever made. So each one of these has a different spot of DNA, the DNA can be in ink, proteins can be in ink, even individual viruses. These are tobacco-as-egg virus particles. So we can place them exactly on a surface where we want them to be. We can study how an individual virus, for example, interacts with a cell, how it enters a cell, study one virus particle at a time as opposed to looking at a big statistical ensemble of particles and trying to scale down to the individual particle. Again, this allows us to think about it from a bottom-up approach rather than a top-down approach. And you can build the nano-electronic devices where you can place nanoscopic amounts of material in between the active components of a device and make electrical measurements on it. That's the good news. The bad news is, the critics say, this is nice, Chad, but here's the problem, it's really slow. I mean, for you to write a book, forget Richard Feynman's speech, it's going to take you, you know, a decade, it's going to take a long time to be able to make a lot of structures. And therefore, I lose the scaling that I get with photolithography. Photolithography, one of the reasons our computational devices are chief, is that they can print out millions and millions of these in a very short period of time because they can make one master mask and then print all these structures in parallel. This is done in a serial manner. Well, we thought about that, and we said, hey, there's a blueprint for parallelizing this. And that's just the development of the modern-day printing technology. Going from the quill pen in China four thousand years ago to modern-day printers, this isn't so modern, but this is one of the key landmarks in terms of the development of the technology where we go to multiple pen plotters. And our idea was that we could do the same. And the first thing we did was, we commercialized an instrument. We even started a second company called Nano Ink that's in the research park, and they quickly commercialized this technology, made it work extremely well. So sophisticated, if you were here in the beginning, we had a lot of artwork that was being shown. Many of those are structures made by dip-nan. I can take your picture, import it into the instrument, and tell it to duplicate it in a one-molecule-high nanostructure at a set resolution, and it will do it in a matter of minutes. It's that sophisticated now. And it does it like a dot matrix type printer, does it making the pen reside on a particular spot, and by controlling the contact time, you can control how large the feature is. It's in a controlled humidity box here, that's important because that allows us to ratchet up the humidity or down the humidity, which allows us to control the flow rate of the molecules coming from the tip of the surface. That doesn't get us parallel. This gets us parallel, if you look at this, this is a structure made by a collaborator, Chang Lu, who recently moved from UIUC to Northwestern. He's a fantastic microfap person, and he's been able to make a device like this where we have ten pens on here, and each pen has a little heater on it. And by heating, you can cause the pens to curl and cause them to come up and down. And so now, we not only have a printer that has ten different pens, but we can engage and disengage them at will, which is really important in terms of making really sophisticated structures. I mean, you can think about, that's pretty striking. This right here, you barely can see the pens right here. You need a high-powered optical microscope to actually see the tips, that's what this is being viewed through in this particular case. But that's only ten. Well, here's an example where you have an entire silicon wafer made up of nothing but AFM pens, or dip pens, 1.3 million. Here you can see each one of the arms coming off. Those are the pyramidal tips. And they look just like a normal pen, but we've got 1.3 million of them, all of which can be used in concert to print over large areas on a surface. Now, it's one thing to make these, it's another thing to make them work. Well, you know, if you study history, you know that this is not totally original. Because if you've been to Thomas Jefferson's home in Monticello, you can see, he had a device there that he used all the time called a polygraph before the lie detector. And this was a tool that he used to duplicate correspondence in the White House. And he called it the finest invention of the present age. The basic idea was that you could put a piece of paper in here and he could write his letter. And over here, he had a mechanical contraption that kind of duplicated the movement of his hand, so he'd get a second copy of that letter. Okay? And so the basic idea here is to make the most massively miniaturized, the most massively parallel version of the polygraph. And so here it is. We took 55,000 pens recently, and we showed we could take his image from a 2005 nickel, and we can make a dot matrix map of it. And by making 9,080 nanometer dots that make up his likeness on a gold surface, we could make 55,000 replicas of that, each one about twice the size of a red blood cell. And if you look carefully, each one of these is a duplicate. If you blow these up, you can, for those of you in the front, you can see, here you can clearly see, you can see, this is an SEM image, this right here is an AFM image, where you can see his face, there's his nose, right, the liberty, the 2005, the in God we trust over here. And again, that was all done in about 20 minutes. Okay, so one of the things the institute can do is, it can put together all the different people that are required to take an interesting scientific discovery and scale it up to something that has real technological significance, and hopefully, in this case, can allow us to do some really interesting science and develop new technology along the way. So what is this being used for? It's being used for lots of things, ranging from, it's being evaluated for a flat-panel display repair, if there are defects in your flat-panel displays, big-screen TVs, for example. They can go repair them because they can find the sites and deposit material to do that. Used to make masks in the photolithography industry, again, you need to make these customized structures that are used to make the replicas in the photolithography industry, in the microfap industry, this is one of the best tools for doing that. It's a great tool for just making small structures and asking what their properties are. So I can miniaturize anything just by putting it on the tip of an AFM and depositing it via dip-nanolithography onto a surface. It's a way of storing information. And you think about that Feynman speech. I can write a structure where the information is hidden by the size. I mean, nobody could ever find that structure unless I told them where it was, because you need the fiduciary marks on the surface to get back there. It's a needle-in-a-haystack type of problem. And the second thing is, the information can be stored based upon a physical pattern, right, the words, but also what they're made of. Because the stickiness of those molecules give you different contrast images in the readout. And so there's a way of creating really intricate cryptography to store information and hide it and transfer it in a very controllable way. And in fact, it's being evaluated for, used in the pharmaceutical industry for creating ways of tracking counterfeiting of blockbuster pharmaceuticals. And then, these are other areas here, so these are ones that the companies focus on, and these are ones that we focus on. And all sorts of interesting structures, ranging from building molecular-tronic circuits and understanding what their properties are, to building high-density oligonucleotide and protein arrays, building really small sensors, studying important processes like crystallization, to learning how to print out catalysts that have properties that depend upon the size, shape, and composition of the materials that we define in the dip-nan experiment, and the distance between the different features that we can define in the dip-nan experiment. Okay, in terms of impact, one of the neat things about this is, people always ask, why do you start the companies? Well, one of the reasons is shown here. In 1999, there's one dot on this map that has dip-nanolithography. Because of the companies, because they can commercialize it, they can proliferate it all over the world. And it's now used in 22 countries and over 200 different laboratories, and if you map its use, because of that, it's doubled more than every year of its existence. Okay, economic impact. Where does all this stuff go? Well, one of the things we've done at Northwestern, there are now over 100 nanotech companies out there, well over 100, probably approaching 200 companies that are high-end nanotech. We've created a program to spin them out of Northwestern and the institute, and we've spun out 15 in the last five years, well, last really eight years. Nano Ink, Nanosphere, I've talked about them, Integrated Micro Devices, Omics, Acumen, just examples, Nanotopes, Silentec, Nanogenres. If you look at some of the topics, they range from diagnostics to therapeutics to electronics and the development of computational devices. This is pretty big, and we talk about impact to the area. This has brought in, this isn't $360 million of NSF grants and NIDRA, this is $360 million of capital invested in technology invented at Northwestern and then used to develop technology that's used all over the world. And so, to me, that's really a very important measure of impact and one that we try to really push very hard. Because in the end, I think what describes a useful invention or a useful discovery is the people that ultimately use it, the number and types of people and what it's ultimately used for. Okay, last slide, societal impact. We're talking about economic impacting, I tried to think of some quick questions, I didn't get Lori's email where she sent me the questions I was supposed to look at, so I just wrote a few down. I think there are a lot of really important ones, both on the technological side but also on the ethical side of things. Can nanotechnology contribute to or solve the current energy crisis? We were talking about, Mark and I were talking about this on the way down. I really believe it's going to be the secret to doing this. I think the only way we're going to really do it and do it in a meaningful way is by getting new material. The only way to get new materials rapidly is through the discovery, through miniaturized systems that are made possible through a lot of the tools that I talked about. Will nanotechnology make gene therapy a real possibility? I didn't talk about this, but we have programs now where we're using particles, we discovered particles that are great for carrying materials into cells and delivering different agents to those cells that allow you to manipulate a lot of the processes that occur within, things that look very, very promising from that perspective. Will nanoparticles allow faster, more effective environmental cleanup? That stands alone. Will ultrasensitive nano-based bi diagnostics allow cures for previously diseases were caught too late for hope? PSA example. Do nanomaterials pose a health or environmental risk? I mean, so not everything's good, we should be thinking about these. How do we deal with them? I mean, how do we regulate these types of materials? What's the approach that's going to be taken? What's too much, what's too little? What groups have to do it? Who controls access to potentially lifesaving nanotechnologies? Right, so if I have a way of catching cancer or a way of curing cancer, who gets it? Who doesn't? Is it only the paying customer? Will nanotechnology make medical diagnostic tools so pervasive and low cost, how do we decide who gets screened for what and where? Insurance company issues, that's a good one. You give a sample of blood, are they allowed to screen you for everything if they have these tools, if they're so readily available? And what does that do from a societal impact standpoint? So, you know, lots of great things are happening, but of course, like with any technology, it changes the way you think about many different aspects of society and how you can ultimately use these types of tools. And it takes some serious thought, I think, to make sure that we do the right things we develop. I'll stop there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, now, this is your part. There are three ways to ask questions. And if you stay to the end, there's actually a gracious amount of food to entertain you. But we hope that you're going to take seriously that it's you that makes sense of this technology and translate it back into your lives, your labs, and your futures. There's a, Risa is standing right there for one mic, Denise is standing there, and we also have a handheld mic for people who are shy but actually walking over to the edges and want to raise your hand from your seat. All three kinds of questions will be accommodated. So, either you can answer these, or you can raise new ones of your own. We're going to take all comers. Okay? Yes, go ahead.
That's a good question. He said, where are we at this point in time in terms of evaluating health and environmental risks? Well, there has been an active program, really since the inception of all of these centers, to focus on those issues, to think about not only what we can do with this in terms of making really neat new technology, but how are we going to deal with the regulation of these types of materials? Where are they going to be used? Is it safe to use them in those types of applications? There have been all sorts of things proposed, from, we need a new agency to regulate nanotechnology to, we don't really need to do a whole lot because most of these are new molecules, new materials, and we have agencies already in place that are geared up to evaluate them, like the FDA and the EPA. I fall on the side of the latter view, in the sense that, as I said, nanotechnology is not a new thing you can regulate, it's really just a way of thinking. And a way of thinking that's enabled through all this tool development that we've talked about. And so I think the best way to do it is to get people in the FDA, in the EPA, really smart about the materials that are being developed, a lot of the techniques that have been employed, and to look at the key issues associated with materials that are going to see prime time. You will bankrupt any system if you say, we're going to put a moratorium on studying nanoscience and nanotechnology until we know how to regulate every material that's ever produced. That would be kind of like saying, we're not going to develop any more chemicals until we have a way of looking at every new chemical that's produced and deciding whether or not it has any sort of negative impact in society or the environment. And of course, you can't do that. If we go up to the Evanston campus, you go to any major academic lab, there are hundreds of thousands, well, tens of thousands of new chemicals produced every year in labs. Most of them are, the world supply is and will be 10 or fewer milligrams that is not used, that is not ever skinned because they have no real application. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put a lot of energy, money, and time into regulating those, looking at the consequences, because they're just not used for anything. And I think the same is true for this area of nanoscience and technology. As these materials come online, as you begin to use more of them, and they scale them up, as they get closer to environmental use, to human use, you have to seriously take a look at them and ask, you know, what are the potential risks? And to monitor them accordingly. Say what? Well, they're already out there right now, and we've done the experiment to some extent with certain materials. And you can't, all materials are different, so I would say zinc oxide is probably pretty darn safe. I mean, we've been rubbing it on our bodies for now, certainly in the last few decades, and I don't think fine or any indication of detrimental effect. There are other materials, there are things called quantum dots that are made of cadmium sulfide and cadmium selenide, that have all sorts of neat properties and are being used as indicators to study biological systems, for example, intracellular labels. I think they're going to have a lot of problems with those types of materials because they're made out of heavy metal ions that are known to be toxic. And it's likely that these nanomaterials will have some toxicity associated with them. So you have to apply kind of different standards and take an educated approach to deciding which ones you're going to spend a lot of time with and how much money you're going to devote towards that. And a lot of it depends upon how much of you're going to make and who's going to use it, and how close it's going to be to the humans.
Hi, a related question. I've been trying to see what's been done in terms of long-term pathology of some of these biomaterials that are now materials that are being used in patients. I know that there have been a lot of acute toxicity studies. I'm not asking this as a challenge, I'm asking this as an opportunity, as the chairman of the Department of Pathology, to work with people in Evanston to try to figure out, what are some of the long-term implications of having these materials come in contact with our bodies, you know, over the course of decades? So, question is, A, are people already working on this and we just don't know about it because it's been done on companies? Or are there opportunities to do this?
Well, the answer is yes and no. So, when you say, are people already doing this? Again, there are a huge number of classes of materials. Again, there are a huge number of classes of materials. So, we just put in for a big environmental center. I think another center will be focused on your topic very shortly. This has to become a big issue as you see more success stories in terms of companies going public, companies selling product and getting these systems out there. People are going to start getting very concerned about what the long-term effects are. And so, I think you're going to see a center that is focused on the issues that are important to you. Now, the reason I say yes and no is that Rice University has done some work, and they've done it primarily with carbon nanotubes, and they've done it with C60, Buckminster Fuller. The reason is, Richard Smalley was from Rice, and he's the one that discovered them, and that's their whole institute is based on. But that's a very small fraction of the nano world. And in fact, I would argue from a medical standpoint, it's not even the important one because most of the medical devices that are being developed, at least on a short-term horizon, are based upon things like gold and silver nanoparticles, based upon quantum dots, cadmium sulfide, cadmium selenide. There are a few things based upon carbon nanotubes, but you really have to kind of look at the full gamut and pick the ones that are really relevant, going back to his question. So, I think the opportunity is there and it's one that should be explored.
Yeah, I would love to explore that with you. I think the other issue is that some of these things, as you mentioned, as you reduce the scale and the size of these materials, their properties change, so it may be hard to predict what their interaction with macrophages, with the endothelium, with leukocytes is going to be when you take things that are normally, you'd say, micron-sized and then make them nano-sized.
Yeah, you're dead on. Actually, I don't even think it's so much a function of size. It's a part size, but what people miss, it's also surface functionality. And so, we have examples of particles of gold, for example. We're not going to cells at all with one type of layer on it. You put a T-10 oligonucleotide on it, and it goes right through every cell it's ever seen. I mean, nerve cells, fetal cells, you name it. We have yet to find cells that won't go through. And we use that in a positive to do intracellular gene regulation. But it makes you wonder, right, what are the properties of these structures? And we really have to look at them and again, be more critical as these things get closer and closer to human use.
So, this is, one of the things that's really interesting is the, some of the, I worry for a living because I'm a bioethicist, but some of the answers to this is we don't know. These are very new techniques. Each one will have particularly new properties, and we don't know the long-term effects, in the same way that Marie Curie, right, discovered radium and in fact, died of her exposure to it. And the Industrial Revolution too was marred by the extraordinary use of these powerful ways of remaking the world and their extraordinary ability to flood the world. So, that tension, I think, is smart to think about in advance this time because, yeah, there will be effects. NASA is doing some early work on it and in some research with our center, the NASA Science Officer at Houston is actually, at the Johnson Space Center, has actually got, you know, a bunch of, a device where you put mice on a little centrifuge and expose them to, again, carbon nanotubes. And it's beginning, but still, very, very early and only in carbon nanotubes. Right. Right, so you might just, they might be dangerous but incredibly useful, so therefore handled correctly, which is your job.
Hi, I just had a question about, you mentioned PCR and the use of diagnostics. I was just wondering, like, in other words, PCR is like DNA replication in a test tube where you're making a series of DNA with all the nucleotides. I was just trying to figure out, maybe you've answered that question by answering his, but like, how are you actually designing the particles using nanotechnology? In other words, and how is it controlled and what do you think? And if you think that PCR is a thing of the past because of this thing of nanotechnology arisen or not?
No, I don't know. PCR is not a thing of the past. PCR is an incredibly powerful technology, but remember, it's had now two decades, roughly two decades, worth of development. And we're talking about five years of what I call pre-commercial development and now a couple of years of commercial development for this type of technology. I think what you'll see is like what PCR did in terms of opening up possibilities for nucleic acid detection and any other types of applications associated with it, you're going to see not the complete demise of all the old diagnostic approaches, but kind of additive effects, the ones where you maybe slowly replace some PCR-based technologies, but you do things that go beyond a normal type of PCR-based technology. You create the possibility for doing things in the emergency room, create the possibility for doing detection perhaps in the doctor's office, maybe someday even home. But a lot has to happen for that to take place. And, you know, when you have a technology like this, the world doesn't say, "Okay, I'm going to scrap everything I've got, bring in Merckent's new technology, we're going to, you know, vet everything." I mean, what they'll do is they'll slowly bring it in, they'll look at the pluses, the minuses, and there will be some negatives. There's going to be finicky technology. They'll find the strengths and weaknesses, and through a give and take with the company developing this, they'll try to work through the weaknesses and emphasize the strengths, and you'll see those capabilities become part of, I think, normal diagnostic labs and, as I said, move to the hospital and hopefully the doctor's office.
One thing I also want to add, it's happening, and he is being way too modest, but one of the extraordinary interests of this is people who are interested in justice and in fact, global health, which I know a lot of people at Northwestern are. The working lab and also people at Rice are trying to figure out what's one of the most important problems in human health is clean water. Simple, but difficult to get. But if you could detect water, the bacterial and viruses in water and problems in water cheaply and easily, right, and know which water is clean and which water is not, you could really transform a lot of what happens in development.
And that's actually a good example for third-world applications. You're not going to use PCR-based technologies for most part, because of cumbersome but also because of cost.
So, you see how things get smaller, they could get like cell phones, more widely spread and more applicable to uses around more people who are poor. And all of that is, that's one of the things that I think is interesting and one of the things you want to think about in a more humane society. Yes, one of our questions.
Curious, what precautions are needed or which ones are you taking to protect the people in the laboratories that are working with these nanomaterials?
Well, I mean, I tell everybody in my lab that, you know, everything you make, regardless of whether it's a nanomaterial or a chemical, I mean, the next cause of cancer, the next cure for cancer, and so you should treat it, you know, accordingly. I mean, you should respect everything new as if it could be extremely dangerous, and until we know otherwise, treat it with extreme caution. And so, it ranges from doing things in under controlled environments to using the proper types of materials to keep them from getting physical contact with them. Taking, for example, what I said before, with the nanoparticles that with certain oligonucleotides will go right through cells. I mean, if they're going through cells that you're studying in the lab, they're also going through your skin cells. So, it's important to, you know, keep that in mind, and although we get really comfortable sometimes with the types of techniques we have and technologies that we develop, we have to always treat them as we're stuck in a cell we know for certain that there is no negative impact.
Okay, someone on this side? Yes.
Yeah, this question is sort of philosophical. I have a, oh, it's coming from this character. I have some deep philosophic concerns about the definition of nanotechnology in terms of just scaling things down to the atomic and molecular level. Because I know in physics in the 20th century, we've been, we've learned to think of space and time in a unified framework. And now, this particular representation of nanotechnology separates the spatial and the temporal features. And I think if we can somehow bring together in the definition of nanotechnology a spacetime concept that has developed in the 20th century through the relativity theories, we may be able to possibly handle more of these temporal evolution problems which could be related maybe to the energy crisis, the hydrogen storage systems, for example, where we have to understand the temporal evolution of systems. So, the point is, if we do make this change in our definition, is it also going to help in the commercialization process where we have to talk about how systems evolve in time and to develop those systems which will evolve in certain temporal limits? Maybe this new graphene material, which is really being used to test fundamental constructs of spacetime, and was actually synthesized at Northwestern, first of all, could be one test case to perhaps broaden our definition of nanotechnology in this sense.
Yeah, I mean, look, as I said, you can talk to 10 different people and you'll get 10 different definitions. I try to use definition, I gave you, I don't know if it was a definition or a description, just so that I can compartmentalize and think about what the real opportunity is in terms of developing something beyond chemistry and normal biology. Because a lot of the skeptics, when this whole field started, they said, "Well, look, you're just talking about chemistry, you're just talking about biology." That's not true. I mean, there are interesting properties associated with materials that fall in this interesting length scale. And, you know, I gave you a few examples of that. And the more we learn about those materials, the more striking, I think, those properties become. We've discovered all, I left out a lot with these particles. They have interesting hybridization properties, the way they interact with DNA, it's very different from free DNA, and there are cooperative effects that become possible when you have lots of oligonucleotides on the surface of the particle that are not possible, when you have an oligonucleotide attached to a molecule, for example, because of nanoparticles. There are catalytic properties associated with structures that are not associated with the bulk materials. Again, there's so many differences that occur in that, in terms of properties for materials that fall within that length scale. That's kind of the way I think about it in terms of saying, "Hey, this is the opportunity we have to develop a particular field and to differentiate what we're doing from the old way of doing things." There are certain ways, certainly ways of expanding that definition. I think about it from a chemist's perspective. Physicists have a different take on it, and material scientists have even a third take on it. I'm not sure anyone is right or wrong. I think it's really your choice in terms of how you approach the development of it. Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, over here. Oh, back, back there, okay. And then you'll be next.
Okay. All right. I would like to know from your perspective as a top leader in nanotech, what are the top three current nanotechnologies that pose the greatest risk to the environment? And what's like one up-and-coming nanotech that, you know, that also poses a big risk? And I wonder whether you could also talk about future nanotechnologies to combat, to kind of contain dangerous nanotechnologies, whether nanotech could also hold that promise?
I mean, I don't, I think it's way too early to even address that because I can't think of a nanotechnology that's hit primetime that poses a great risk yet. That doesn't mean that they won't come, it doesn't mean that...
Or would you foresee, based as a leader in your field and your experience, would you foresee the categories or types of nanotechnologies that pose the greatest risk?
Well, I think it depends upon where you're going to use them and how you're going to use them. As I said, I think that there was a lot of interest early on in using these things called quantum dots, cadmium sulfide and cadmium selenide particles, which have fantastic properties. They adjust the size of these particles and they fluoresce at different wavelengths depending upon the particle size. It's a process or a topic called quantum confinement that allows you to effectively control the size of the blocks of the electrons to move around in based upon the size of the particle. Although they have these fantastic properties and they've been used now for lots of research applications, we intentionally stopped using them because my view was that even if you develop something useful out of them from a diagnostic or therapeutic standpoint, and even if they didn't have any real toxicity because of what they're made of, it would be the equivalent of trying to go door-to-door trying to sell mercury. So, if I were to bet, I mean, if people were to take those materials and really scale them, I'd keep an eye on them because I think that when you start making them in larger quantity, there will be issues associated with their toxicity and associated with their environmental impact. But even there, it's still way too early. And for that reason, the NSF is funding a $5 million a year center that we're competing for, a lot of other schools are competing for it as well, that are going to look at some of the environmental impacts of some of the technologies that are coming online. And we don't know how the other schools approached it, but our approach to it was, "Look, we can't look at every material that's out there. It's just physically impossible, it's impossible from a budgetary standpoint, but we can take the five most important classes of materials." Quantum dots being one example, carbon nanotubes, fulleranes, gold nanoparticles, silver nanoparticles, the oxide particles, titanium oxide and zinc oxide. And we can try to take the most popular uses of those and break them down and ask, "Are there significant environmental considerations here?" And I think that's the way we're going to get to answers about what the potential problems could be. But it's way too early to say anything in terms of doom and gloom and in terms of great. I guess we can be really enthusiastic if we have, if we develop the answer.
One thing I want to say in response to that too, which is an interesting issue because it came up with nuclear energy, was the decision not to go forward robustly with nuclear energy meant that we, because we were afraid of the environmental risks and exposures and couldn't control it and couldn't figure out what's with the waste products largely, meant that as a world, as a global society, we turned to petroleum products or a reliance on petroleum products, which led, of course, nearly directly to global warming and, you know, foreign politics and foreign affairs. It really landed us to where we are now. People are rethinking that question. Maybe we should have, early on, thought, "Let's solve the complex safety problems of nuclear energy, thus avoiding the climate change problem." So, look at the burdens and benefits in the same way. And that's why, in terms of ethics, this is a very puzzling question. Because if you turn away from it because of environmental impacts, you'll also turn away from the potential healing and restoration of other ways of looking at it. Notice how complicated the question, the good question that you raised really is. Someone over here, yes.
Okay. Well, the development of the new multiple pen technology enabled the use of organic materials like DNA, amino acids, and proteins to make a computer that could be used, quantum technology of quantum computing? Because right now, I read, I think there are 10 or 20 CubeS computers, but this technology, maybe at some point, you could go to maybe the Apple Store on Michigan Avenue and get one.
We hope so. I mean, that's actually funny you ask that because when we started working with DNA-modified nanoparticles, the idea wasn't to develop a detection system. The idea was to learn how to program material synthesis. The idea being that if I could take particles and put different strands of DNA on them, I could have a mixture of different components, let's say the components for a computational device, and I could add the right DNA strands that would recognize and organize these into a functional architecture. And so, you know, the idea of programmable synthesis through the use of DNA-modified particles was really the big concept in what we reported in Nature Magazine back in 1996. Now, what happened was, we discovered along the way that when you do this and you get particles to assemble because of these events, there are all sorts of fantastic property changes, like the color change. And that's a good way of creating a diagnostic device, and that kind of took us down that road, saying, "How could we not make a computational device or a diagnostic device?" But we'll be coming back to that and trying to ask how we can program the formation of electronic circuits in first simple devices based upon what I call our fogonile assembly approaches, where different DNA strands can very selectively get the right component from a randomly distributed set of components and bring it to the right part of the device based upon the base pairing of DNA.
Yes, this chair.
I'm wondering how far off on the horizon do you expect to see large-scale nanomanufacturing of mundane objects, and what are the current challenges to getting us there quicker?
Um, you know, I think it depends on what you call nanomanufacturing, what you call, did you say mundane object or? So, I think we've already got, we've already got tachys with nano, you talked about that. Right, so, I mean, we produce all sorts of different types of particles now for purposes ranging from catalysis to coatings, to paints, to bacteriocides, to particles that can be used in both diagnostics and therapeutics. The use is just scaling and scaling with time and with more exploration devoted to what these properties are and what we can do with them. If you're talking about creating, things like he was alluding to, what I call systems capable of self-organization based upon design principles that involve things like base pairing in DNA, you know, we're still a long ways off from being able to do that. We're still doing very, what I call, very simple but important early demonstrations of some of the capability. We've recently discovered we can program crystallization. You can take particles with different types of DNA and get, by adding the right type of DNA, get one set of particles to form one type of crystal structure, meaning arranging the particles in space in a particular way, adding a different type of DNA and getting them to go to a different type of crystal structure, which is, again, fundamentally very interesting and begins to get at what he was alluding to in terms of making functional devices based upon programmable assembly. But there's still a large gap between what I'd call neat laboratory demonstration and real utility.
Do you know, is there a few challenges?
DNA, get one set of particles to form one type of crystal structure, meaning arranging the particles in space in a particular way, adding a different type of DNA and getting them to go to a different type of crystal structure, which is, again, fundamentally very interesting and begins to get at what he was alluding to in terms of making functional devices based upon programmable assembly. But there's still a large gap between what I'd call neat laboratory demonstration and real utility.
Do you know, is there a few challenges you can point out that are currently being worked on or that we're afraid will never be over with?
No, I mean, the big, the number one challenge in nanoscience and nanotechnology, 15 years ago and today, is addressability. How do you rapidly address lots of, you know, we have a mismatch in size. I mean, if we have a small structure, meaning a little bead, for example, we can come down with a tweezer and pick it up. We shrink that bead, though, down to a nanoscale, we no longer can use tweezers, right? We have to somehow interface what we're trying to look at with the tools that we manipulate the structure with and then with the macroscopic world. So there's this kind of scaling down to that, allowing us to manipulate, and then scaling back, allowing us to look at what we've done. And that has always been the slow cog in this whole process. So even when I talk about making all the tiny Jeffersons, we can make those rapidly. We still have a hard time rapidly reading them unless we make them big enough so that we can see them with more conventional optical techniques. Thank you.
Here.
I gotta hear a late, I didn't hear, are those rhetorical questions up there? Would you like some answers?
You can answer them all.
Okay. Well, we'll start with the patent system, first of all. At this time, an inventor who's infringed against has to file a civil case. And in two that I know of, one was infringed on by General Electric and the other was Wang Labs. So both of those inventors were told that they'd have to put up almost half a million dollars just to launch the lawsuit. So we need to make infringement a crime so that the government prosecutor becomes our lawyer. And then the individual inventor can get somewhere with his investment of time and money. The Inventors' Protection Act of 1999, I thought might do something about that, but instead they did things like standardize the software that you need to use to submit your invention. They picked Microsoft. So a big disappointment there, but the hackers will love it. Now, anyway, as we go on here, faster, more effective environmental cleanup, don't hire government workers, especially unionized government workers, that'll solve that or improve that problem there. With the health and environmental risk, we already have organizations that regulate those things, like EPA and the FDA, make them do their job. They work for us, we're taxpayers. Fire those who don't want to do their job, there's plenty of other people who knock their job. Access to potentially lifesaving nanotechnologies, the free marketplace can probably operate there. How do we decide who gets screened for what? Free marketplace again. And for, care is just trust Jesus.
Okay. Now we can all go home.
We're done.
Actually, I've got, I've got, you would wait in here? Yes. Yes, you.
Well, I mean, the one example I gave with PSA, right, in terms of tracking recurrence in prostate cancer, many examples of that. These are the same types of tests that you would go to a doctor and give a sample of blood or saliva to urine and they would test the different markers associated with the disease. What this is going to do is expand the venue, make the technology cheaper, and make it much more accessible to the patient, to the doctor, and closer to the point of care. So we don't have to send a sample to an outside. When you get tested right now, you, they take blood and they send it to a quest diagnostic, right? And then two days later, two weeks later, you get tested. A lot of these types of tests can be done, first of all, with much higher sensitivity, much higher accuracy, and can be done at the point of care. And so you're kind of getting rid of the middleman, getting the information faster to both the doctor and the patient, and taking out a lot of stress and hopefully creating ways of improving the patient caring man. No, this system is non-commercial, it's probably even looking up on the web, it's a very good ID system. And that is one of the first, it's the first, it's got the first FDA, three FDA for devices. One is the actual device itself and the other are two assays, one for looking at hypercoagulation disorders and, to a degree, to blood clotting. And then another one is looking at the genetic signature associated with inability to process or deal with coumadin, warfarin. So that if they're treated for blood clotting with warfarin, you don't give them so much that they end up making blood vessels and they have a major medical problem. Combine the two so that you can, first of all, find the genetic abnormality that says you might have potential blood clotting problem. And second of all, help monitor whether or not the therapeutic in this case is the right one.
Yes.
I mean, have the toxic companies or...
One of the things that's interesting about that question is, this works because nanotechnology allows a much more subtle detection. And Northwestern, because there's something about the, you've mentioned the HIV and the Alzheimer's testing, so very, very early on, before the disease expresses itself, now that has some good things, as you noticed, right? But there's got, there's some ethical problems there, too, because very early on, way before you'd have any symptoms, you might be able to detect that you had, say, Alzheimer's. You want that knowledge. It's something you want to know now, you know, in your 30s. How would your life change if that were the case? What should your employer do or your healthcare company do? Those are all issues that are raised by the increasing of the subtle detection techniques, which is great because you get more hope, but you also get to think of yourself as someone who needs a little more hope earlier on. And again, a burden benefit question that's before us, it's not solved yet, but it's good, it's, every question also has those two competing, those competing burdens and benefits. Again, another interesting ethical feature. Yes.
I'd like to take this discussion back to what you talked about in terms of the economic impact. I was really struck by your comments relative to $360 million worth of capital funding being created, 15 companies. Even the name International Institute of Nanotechnology all give an impression that there's some big plans underfoot here in Chicago. My question to you is, what do you see as the possibility for creating the nanotechnology equivalent of a Silicon Valley in Chicago?
Well, I mean, a lot of people call it the nanite corridor. That is the idea, to try to create, you know, not just a lot of companies. I can go on the web and I can start 20 companies tomorrow. It's one thing to start a company, it's another to start a company that can attract significant venture capital investment. And you take the company Nanoster, the one that just went public, I always say, I mean, point to the last time in the Chicago area when a West Coast or East Coast venture capital firm dumped $50 million of venture capital into a high-tech startup company in the Midwest, which doesn't happen, it didn't happen before nanotech. Now with that success story and with a lot of the other ones that have started, I think we've reached this kids and we have, we are really sitting in a prime opportunity to bring a lot of investment, not just from the Chicago area, but from the West and East Coast to Chicago. And if we play our cards right, we really could build something equivalent to Silicon Valley or the nanite corridor.
Yes.
Earlier in the presentation, you discussed that you can create these new molecules or new materials layer by layer. And I was wondering, has any of your scientists or scientists that you're working with started to address the superconductivity at room temperature?
No. I mean, we have, there are big issues there. We had at one time, it was a huge effort in Illinois, a $50 million center that was between the University of Illinois and Northwestern, really focused on trying to develop not nanomaterials but macroscopic materials that could raise the critical temperature for superconductivity. And they made significant headway, but still a long way to go. And although it's an interesting topic...
I'm curious, among the general public, what do you think the biggest misconceptions about nanotechnology are and what role scientists and engineers and universities can have in correcting them and how important it is for the general public to really understand nanotechnology at this point?
Well, I think, I mean, two misconceptions. One is that a lot of people think that nanotechnology is about the nano iPod. Very little nanotechnology in it at all. The other is, this is, there are two parts. One is, I think because of the computer age and because of electronics, everybody thinks that this is a field that focuses on the miniaturization of electronics. And of course, there's a component of it that does, but there's a large fraction of it that goes well beyond that. And I think many of the real exciting developments are coming from those areas. The reason I say that is that in the electronics industry, we've got a trillion-dollar infrastructure that's been established over the last several decades, made a big bet on what the technologies are to get to the next generation of devices. Although they have lots of hurdles, they seem to be able to get over them time and time again. And to really make them change their approach is going to require something so good and so easy to implement. It's a really high hurdle. Doesn't mean it can't be done, doesn't mean that there won't be major advances, but I think that a lot of the real opportunity is in areas beyond electronics. And we talked about a lot of the biomedical ones in particular. And then I guess the last one is that the, for the longest time, I think people used to think about, I don't, we don't hear, it's great we don't hear the question so much about the nanobots and the self-assemblers, there were, you know, this, part of this field came out of science fiction. And there used to be these ideas of, you know, creating the little tiny nano-terminators that could run around and build themselves and take over the world, move us down in the food chain. Fortunately, that has kind of left, I think, most of the popular press and people have gotten a lot more educated about what the field's about, what the real opportunities are. We've really taken more of a focus on what I'd call the hardcore science aspects of nanotechnology.
Actually, I'm going to just say a word from the NY Science Council.
Yeah, I don't, I think, I think the fear factor is one now, if there is one. You know, the funny thing, I go to Capitol Hill all the time, I talk to senators and congressmen and I start telling them about nanotechnology, I've got my pitch, trying to get them all excited. And they usually say, "Look, you don't need to sell us a nan, we love nanotechnology." So the nanotechnology really has a strange effect on people. And I used to describe it in the early days, I'd get in an airplane, I'd talk to them about, he's a chemistry professor, you know, within 30 seconds, they'd go, "That was the worst class I ever had, terrible and awful experience," and that was the end of the conversation. You talk to them about nanotechnology, even though you're talking about a lot of the same issues in chemistry, they talk your ear out. They want to learn more and more and more about the field and what's going on. Exactly. It's just, well, the people, they just feel, maybe because of the popular aspect of it, they feel like they know something about it, feel like they want to know more about it, feel like this is going to have a significant positive impact in their life. I think the negative focus, if there is any, is a small contingent of people that are concerned about the environmental aspects. But again, I think of being concerned before we really know what to be concerned about. We don't know really what the real particles are, what the real material. There are no disasters yet, there hasn't been even, yeah, exactly, there haven't been major scale-ups of any of the materials that, yeah, it's still way too early to pinpoint which one could be the big concern there is.
One of the things that actually is interesting about this is, look at your involvement here or this town hall meeting, nanotechnologists such as Mark Rattner and Chad Merkin have been extraordinary in inviting the public and bioethicists and sociologists and economists right to the beginning. And it's allowed us to do at Northwestern what's called upstream ethics. So way, instead of like having the technology and then we sort of go, "What? You've done what?" You know? We've actually been able to, at the very beginning, tour the labs, have our graduate students take a look at all of this. We're thinking about it as they are making it happen. And we can raise the questions and you can raise the questions, which is exactly why the town hall meeting, go one on January 8th for Mark Rattner, and a continuing effort at that. We think that's a very different way to do science, we're proud of it at Northwestern, and we think that that's because of the shape of the science, that'll be just almost as interesting for those of us in humanity as the actual things, the little tiny things they're making and building. So we're hoping for both, research on both fronts to go ahead. Yes, one final question, I think. Yes?
Yes. In terms of laboratory safety, what kind of personal protective equipment are you using in the labs right now, in terms of gloves and respirators?
You know, all depends upon the project and the materials that are used. We don't use respirators at all. Most of the, most of the materials that we use are not very volatile. I'm more concerned about silica gel, which you use in chromatography than the material. But we're using suspensions of particles in water, in organic solvents and things like that. You're more concerned, if anything, about whether the particles can go through your skin and what sort of effects they may have. So we typically use gloves that don't allow the solvent for particles to penetrate.
Okay. Okay. I want to say before we end and invite you to have the reception, thank you, Chad Merkin, for an extraordinary presentation. And I also want to say Denise and Marissa, can you take a bow? These are two women who've actually done a great deal of putting this together. I think Denise must have put up 200 posters all by herself and she did a fabulous job. Kathy Cook, of course, and Deb also always help us do these presentations and allow us to have the conversation. And again, thank you to all of you. I hope you keep asking us hard questions. You can always reach us directly at bioethics@Northwestern, very easy. If you have questions that occur to you afterward and you want us to get them to our nanoscience just email us and we will actually make sure that your questions get to the right people and you get the right kind of answers. So thank you very much and please do join us.